We'll also order the Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Regular Public Meeting for March 20th. Oh, here we go. I forgot to do next, something about that. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, it must be on there. Here we go. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public, to have advanced notice of, and to attend the meeting of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting setting forth the time, date, and location. Oh, thank you, time, date, and location. To be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. We have a roll call.
Ms. Casselton? Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Gina Cola? Ms. Prus?
Here.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Here.
Ms. Voorhees? Mr. Woodward?
Here.
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 10:4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss matters related to HIB, student discipline, and legal matters. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10:4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So I move that we convene to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you. Okay, I move that we convene to regular public session, one of the second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I plead to all. Pledge allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We have one communication for the board this month related to our last thing that's scheduled for questions. And that, just for information sake, that we obviously have on our emails, of course, for the month, but that is one that goes to the entire board and superintendent and the business administrator, the board at the east hall spot that will be open plus administration. Whether it's emails to come to individuals or just the superintendent, but on the agenda of the board. We need to approve minutes for the hybrid public workshop meeting February 6th and February 27th, regular and faculty sessions. So I motionably approve those minutes. So good. Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Gina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
And we want to be aware of student faculty reports.
And we gave up a lot, but we can't afford one air. So for early on Tuesday, offer parties to rock your socks to support those who are in print, who have so much sauce and twill for the world down to the gray. And also we look forward to our spring length dance on March 30th. On April 5th, we'll have our annual neurodiversity global party. This day supports the idea that people experience interacting with the world around them in many different ways.
At Bardot School, save the date for the parent guardian workshop for social emotional learning night on Wednesday, March 29th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Bardot's media center. Come learn about what social emotional learning, SEL, is and ways to support your child. Every attendee will go home with pigeons and more. These takeaways are sponsored by the HPEA's pride. And HPEA, RAS, and Bardot hosts Bingo for Books. Join us for one night of bingo prizes for all Bardot students and families on Tuesday, April 4th, from 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. in the Bardot cafeteria.
For the middle school, the Globe Junior class is hosting a t-shirt sale. We'll be rapping three to five dollar gift cards to any student who buys a shirt. And April tutoring is a new platform we are using to provide tutoring to students after hours. On April 20th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., In Power Somerset is hosting a virtual dating and tobacco prevention event for middle school and high school youth and their parents. They have a great keynote speaker, Rob Paladie, and will be giving late prizes throughout the event. Highland Park believes in running a youth academy, the academies for students entering into students in the 10th grade. They then offer 10th to 12th grade students opportunity to help out for all community service hours. The 7th grade social is coming up next month on Tuesday, April 4th, from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. We're hosting a community health fair occurring at the Highland Park Community Center on March 21st from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. In partnership with St. Peter's Hospital and Highland Park Borough, this health fair is taking place. The fair intends to connect community members to health resources they might need. They might, they might be in need of in a more convenient setting.
And finally, for the high schools, spring break is in two weeks, from April 5th to April 14th. April 5th will also be the last day of March period three. The Red Cross Club will be having a blood drive on March 31st from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at that high school gym. You can sign up via redcrossedblood.org, or Stephen Young, or a Red Cross Club officer or anybody. Jepa is selling t-shirts to fundraise for their competition in Florida. Please see Ms. Churico if you have any questions. And he gave me some drinks in collaboration with Globe called Bubbles and Sparkles. And lastly, the top of the month period project in the teen center will be hosting a mental product dump trial to help end period poverty. The products will be collected during the month of March, Women's History Month. Pinklin will be located at the front doors of the high school near the cafeteria. Products will be given to the National Council of Jewish Women to be distributed to a local domestic violence shelter. Please donate virtual products during the month of March to help end period poverty.
Thank you. But we need anything more than this.
No, we're not.
We appreciate the question. Any questions for our participants?
Thank you.
That's great. Okay. We're going to move on to the superintendent's report, it's pretty lengthy tonight. We have some students to honor, and then we'll have a budget presentation and four aftercare presentations.
So, yeah.
Then Phil Meyer.
Phil Meyer.
So first, I'd like to begin with student spotlight for Bardot Elementary. Unfortunately, Ms. Knapp is not able to attend. She was really, really upset when she called this morning that she had an emergency health-related issue that needed her immediate attention. So she apologized, and so I'm going to go to the podium and do some student spotlight. I see some Bardot teachers, are they here to help me?
Sure, yeah, okay. So I'll do that first, and we'll do our student spotlight.
All right, so I'm really excited. First, Eli Back, you're off. So Eli. I'm trying to share some information about you. So that everybody can see you too here. Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming. All right, so this is what Ms. Knapp wants me to share about Eli. Eli has been a member of the student council for the past two years. He has a passion for helping people and spreading kindness. Because of Eli's passion for helping people, the student council was able to raise over $1,100 for a children's hospital program. He was determined to get this project off the ground, and while the student council was not able to make it happen last year, he persisted and made sure that the student council was able to complete it this year. Eli is always kind and compassionate. He's a wonderful student and a great friend for those reasons and more. He should have the spotlight shined on him all the time. Congratulations.
Want to raise some money for the teacher?
Thank you. Thank you. Our next student's spotlight from Bardot is Angie Cruz Martinez. Do you like the spotlight being on you? Well, I don't want to make this too short because we're really proud of your accomplishments. So stand proud and tall and be excited for the recognition. Angie is a student that always works hard and tries her best. She is determined and will even willingly complete extra work to improve her skills. Her hard work and determination have paid off this year, and her reading and academics have made a tremendous progress. Angie is a kind student that cares for others and is always willing to help. Angie, continue to work hard and shine bright. Congratulations. And the other student spotlight tonight for Bardot is George Solomon. Ms. Knapp wanted me to share the following about George. George has worked so hard this year and is always willing to help people out. You can always rely on George to lend a helping hand to the teachers and students. He's such a kind student and always makes everyone smile. So sweet. His hard work has paid off this year as he continues to make progress toward his goals. She says, keep up the amazing work you've brought your support at Bardot. There it is, okay. There we go. There it is. Oh, smiling word. Aw, yeah. Congratulations, all of you. So one of the things that I love hearing was kindness. I know that's really important, and so we appreciate you doing this for the kindness to everyone. Congratulations. And next up, I'd like to have Mr. Roy. I see Mr. Roy on the call with us. And Mr. Lassiter from the high school. Mr. Roy, I'm going to pass the mic over to you. Mr. Roy is at home. And we're just, so we're just going to spotlight a student's athlete recognition, and then I'll let everybody who doesn't know, stay quiet. Exciting presentations on the preliminary budget and the aftercare program, of course, to leave, but I'd like to sustain and honor T. So, Mr. Roy, I'm going to pass the mic to you.
All right. Hello, everybody. Great to see you. I'm here to honor T Atwater, who broke the Highland Park indoor thirty-two, thirty-two hundred meter record this past winter season. Which is quite an accomplishment. We've had a lot of incredible track and field athletes, you know, come through. T broke Bella Goines' record, who is running at Rockbridge University right now as a senior. So that was a very hard record to break. I did want to talk about all the special things that make T so unique. One of them is being just an all-around great leader. I heard the theme of kindness a lot with the Bardot school students, and T is all about just being a kind person. T is one of the kindest people I know. T has had a commitment to, you know, running in track and field all year. T runs cross-country, indoor track and field, and sprinting track. So that's what makes T a great leader, is that commitment to being the best runner that they can. T also is always willing to try new things. This past season in sectionals, T was, came up to me and said, I want to do the mile and the two mile in one day, in one race. Not a lot of distance runners do that. T also exemplifies getting comfortable, feeling uncomfortable all the time in practices, workouts, in races. You know, we always say that's where all the good things happen, just outside of your comfort zone. And T always is a leader in that way. T is never afraid to try something new, which is pretty remarkable. I think one of the most special things about T is T's positive outlook. When I talk to T about a race, T is always positive about what's about to happen. This last year, it dates when I told T, I think he'd beat anybody. T just had a huge smile, and I could see that T believed in everything I was saying. T reflecting on performances, you know, T's still positive about that, too. Even if it's a bad race, T is always super positive to themselves about how that race went. T has a go-for-it attitude all the time. And in every race, that T steps up and competes in. And at Bardot School, we talk a lot about growth mindset, and T is the epitome of growth mindset. I don't think there's anyone I've ever coached who thinks in a growth mindset way as much as T does, that things aren't perfect right away, it takes time. And then, you know, being willing to try new things. So I, I'm so happy that T is getting recognized here tonight. And this is one of the nicest parts about coaching, is to, you know, recognize the great, amazing athletes you have on your team. And it's really nice to be recognized in front of everyone here. So I want to thank everyone on the board, and Dr. Nikozia, and Mr. Lassiter for giving us this opportunity to recognize someone really special. And big congratulations to T for setting a school record.
Thank you, Mr. Roy, very well said. And congratulations to T, and congratulations to our Bardot student spotlight. Let's please all give a round of applause again. So of course, at this point, you are more than welcome to stay for the remainder of our meeting. However, no offense to you. Thank you, Ms. Leonardo, thank you, Ms. Voorhees, for coming, I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Roy, thank you, Ms. Lassiter. Keep up the wonderful work, keep up, our great athletes, though, you're doing amazing things, thank you. Okay. All right. One, two years. Let me see if I can share screen. I'll turn the white presentation perhaps. Am I? Okay, I'm making sure I'm everywhere I need to be, okay? All right. Tonight, Ms. Hopla and I will be presenting the preliminary budget. So it is that season, I know last week you heard from the Finance and Facilities Committee about the expensive meetings that they've been attending to review the budget. Please note tonight, the idea of a preliminary budget is to show that we balanced the budget. So what happens, we'll talk about the funding we got, how we build the budget process. We're going to talk about our preliminary, preliminary options on what the budget is going to be based on if we have some high-ticket items or some changes. And again, tonight is just to show that Ms. Hopla did an amazing job of balancing our budget. She'll kind of speak to a little bit of that tonight. Then what happens after we present our preliminary budget to the county superintendent's office, we then have about a month or so to, a little over a month, to dig deep, to talk about those higher-level decisions as a board, before we make the final board presentation in the beginning of May. So that's just a little background about a preliminary budget. So in terms of the fiscal year budgeting process, so we put a budget together that is aligned with disparate goals and objectives. So if you look at the strategic plan, we make budgeting decisions based on our strategic plan. In addition to the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, the Every Student Succeeds Act, which are our federal legislation on what programs and learning opportunities we have to provide, what resources and programs we have to provide. And then in addition, we align our budget with the New Jersey student learning objectives. So that's the context of our curriculum, right? The meat and potatoes of what we do, why we're here. So our planning process begins actually pretty much in the fall. In October, I put together a launch packet with Ms. Hopla to our leadership team. And so from there, they get, from pretty much October to December, to start building their budgets. So they might look at programming they're offering in schools, what they're doing within their departments, and then they build a budget. And throughout the month of December, each building administrator and department supervisor administrator comes to myself and Ms. Hopla with their budget request, making sure they have strong defenses if they're putting some new action items in there that weren't previously budgeted for, their rationale. Sometimes we ask for some quotes for different items, you know, depending on what the requests are. So, you know, that's kind of a work in progress for about, you know, usually the month of December. Then what happens in January is that Ms. Hopla and I review the requests, make sure that, you know, it's within reason, that we can fit it into our budget, because we also love to look at higher budget items like the personnel budget, our healthcare budget, facilities budget. So we have some other bigger, higher-level areas that we have to look at as well. And then all of the budgets are reviewed by the Finance and Facilities Committee. So you can see they met on February 21st, February 28th, March 2nd, and March 9th of this year. And then each of the building administrators or content area administrators, special ed supervisor, director, they come and they essentially defend their budget to the Finance and Facilities Company Committee, who asks a lot of great questions. And they really digs deep in terms of what the vision is and what we're projecting to spend our money on. And then obviously, tonight, our preliminary budget is open for public comment and for discussion. And then in addition, on May 1st, it will be as well for a final vote. So in terms of our fiscal budgeting process, what Ms. Hopla and I do with the administrators is their budgeting has to be on three levels. So like a level-one priority item in a budget is a legal requirement. So if it is, for example, part of the New Jersey student learning standards, because that curriculum has to be met, those learning standards have to be met. So curriculum writing, if the state pushes out, the state's pushing out new math at the LA standards, so we have to align budgeting and allow for curriculum writing for that. So when the state pushes out a mandate, if it's special education, all of those are top priority legal requirements that we have to do. A level-two requirement is required by board policy. For example, where units graduate therefore requiring higher-level staffing or changing, that kind of thing, might require, if it aligns with our board policy, we align our budget to those level-two options. And then level-three budgeting is not required, but high investment from the community. So meaning it's something that we're really passionate about, believe in. For example, you know, investing money in our music department or mental health programming. It could detract the middle school math program. Those are things that we believe as a community that we want to invest in, and then we budget for those items. So that's how the budgeting philosophy is done. So our preliminary budget and our budget in general, we look at some fiscal responsibility. So what we have to really look at when we budget is the continued increase for students with disabilities. So this year alone, I believe one of the committees reported back, if not I have the numbers in my Google Drive, on the number of special ed students has significantly increased this past year. We're seeing a lot of that, especially in the younger ages with speech and OT needs, possibly from the, maybe as a result of being pulled during the pandemic. We're not really sure, we don't have a rationale that our increase, the numbers of students has increased there, and then throughout the district as well. So we have increased in costs for students with disabilities, facility maintenance. So we do budget for facility projects. So you'll see that in the board agenda tonight. There are some facility projects we're going to be money out of our facility maintenance reserve to pay for a number of projects, including offensive, gives extra play at Irving. So the facilities company will, committee will go through some of those things. In addition, we have federal and state mandates that we have to be fiscally responsible for. Contracts obligations, so when we look at budgeting, we have to look at the union contracts, both for the admin and the teacher union and staff union, to look at increasing costs for those obligations. And then, of course, the increase in transportation costs, which I know we've been communicating since we've come back into school even last year. I know we're not the only school district feeling, feeling that, but you'll see that, for example, in the athletics line items, our athletics budget has gone up because the amount for transportation has gone up. And unfortunately, after-school activities limits the availability of school buses, so we have to have coach buses, and those are even more expensive. But we want to make sure our students have the opportunity to get to, get to, you know, their activities, their sporting events and stuff like that. So you'll see that in the preliminary budget. What we're really proud of with some of the information that we'll talk about in an upcoming slide is that our budget will be able to at least maintain that our schools are fully stacked with qualified personnel. So I'm excited that we'll still be able to maintain that. We don't have to increase class sizes at all, so I don't have to cut any teachers, which is great news. So we can maintain our current class sizes, which is great. We'll still be able to buy robust and structural resources. We're going to update and align to some of the standards. So some of the work you'll see in social studies, curriculum writing, ELA, UZI, things like that, in the arts. And we'll be able to make it all of our wonderful and robust and structural programs that we have. Like I said, you'll see on the list, we're able to even do some more facility maintenance projects in addition to some road grades to really push our facilities in a more forward direction. And then still continue to provide courtesy transportation for students on hazardous routes. In addition, our budget will enable us to provide facility upgrades. So we'll still be working on some facility upgrades as part of the budget for next year. We're going to begin our five-year plan to expand preschool to a full day for all three- and four-year-olds. So you'll see that, although preschool money isn't a different budget item, you will see the modular classrooms as a non-preschool budgeted item. So we're able to increase, to have an increased space due to, you know, the expansion of our budget this year for next year. We're going to open up a bunch more special ed classrooms, which require more personnel, both care professionals and special ed teachers, as well as resources for those classrooms, outfitting a new MLT classroom, a new ADA classroom. And all of that requires a lot of facilities and resources. In addition, our personnel, we'll actually be able to increase the addition of staff to support that increase in enrollment. So our budget structure will allow us to increase staff to meet the needs of our growing population. So let's get down to the bare bones, Linda, let's do this, okay? Do you want to talk about our revenue?
Sure. Well, the good news is that the state is getting closer to what is considered to be adequate funding based on the formula that they came up with many years ago. And this year, the state has given us an increase in state aid, which for many years we haven't been in increases, so this is very good news. So we are seeing an increase of $1,636,000 in state aid. The next slide, we're talking about anticipated funds. In order to balance the budget, we need to anticipate that we are going to have savings in this year that will be able to support next year's budget. And so we are looking to contribute just And so we are looking to contribute just under $2 million, $1,999, from leftover funds from this year to roll into next year's revenues to support the budget. We will be doing, what we described in projects that we'll be doing is on the agenda as well. We're transferring from our capital reserve fund to do major projects. One is a phase-in cost replacement of the boiler in the school. And we have two applications for one called ROD, which stands for Regular Operating District, grants which the state will be funding 40% of the cost of these projects related to an electrical upgrade part of school, unit replacements, which are the heating units in each classroom, and also major roof replacements at both Irving School and the Pennsylvania. So that's capital reserve. Maintenance reserves are smaller projects. Now, sometimes they're done in-house or they're just not what we would consider capital. So there's a lot of things about separating small projects. Things like fencing, maybe replacing some carpeting or some VCT flooring. Yes, oh yes, installing vacant consent detectors at the Blue Millan High School.
Some security guard replacements.
Yes, security breaks, replacement. Transport from emergency reserve. The emergency reserve, by its name, is for emergencies, but there's one use that we take advantage of. We put money into this reserve in case we have complentive costs that are excessive. And this year, we saw a 15.6% increase in our complentive. So in addition to asking the state's permission to utilize a waiver with regard to property tax increases, we are also tapping into our own reserves to help plug the hole in this increased budget. Expertiority aid is an aid we get from the state that we're anticipating that is to cover special education-related costs that are excessive, over and above what they consider to be average costs. We may have things like individual, like one-to-one nurses or things like that that are very expensive. And so the state does give us aid to help cover that. In the past, they've only covered about half of it. It's been higher in the past six, two years, about 180%. So we are anticipating the state will give us a good chunk of money to help cover those costs. And the tax increase, we are looking for a tax increase of $194,767, which is within statutory.
So here's a list of some of our proposed expenditures. So we're looking at, you can see the changes on the right to what is proposed. So we do have an increase in school supplies and extracurricular activities. Again, a lot of that supply chain issue, a lot of the cost of things have increased. We're opening up new classrooms, so one-time nuisance is about fitting a new special education classroom or things like that with resources is important, including furniture and, you know, keyboards and blocks and all the other stuff that these classrooms need. So district operating budgets, including over capital improvements that obviously has also gone up. We've had an increase in curriculum instruction and professional development that's gone up slightly. Again, the state seems to be moving a little quicker with their changes in curriculum. So we've got a lot of work to do in making sure we're up to speed on that. Obviously, salaries and benefits, like Ms. Hopla shared, again, that is all contractual. Special education salaries, which are also included above. And you can see the breakdown of our salaries and how much of that is special education salaries and costs that has also increased because we had to, one, we've had a lot more special education staff, and two, we've had to pay a little bit more. It's very, we still have special education classes technically unfilled. We have them covered by special education teachers, but we've had to pull intervention teachers and other programs because we just haven't been able to find the staff. So we're hoping in the spring we'll have some better luck. I know we're not the only districts feeling that. The special education out-of-district placement, including transportation. So you can see, actually for our out-of-district placement, the number of students has actually gone down, but the tuition has gone up. So hence why we see an increase in out-of-district tuition. They're really charging a lot more for those programs now. And then the special education in district cost. Kind of similarly, again, the breakdown for special education out-of-district costs. Again, the tuition is up, but the number of students is down. And then our special ed out-of-district transportation is slightly down. Fewer kids. Want to talk about the?
Tax break. So this is, this is a complicated slide. So we are on a, what's called a fiscal year basis. Our year starts July 1st and ends June 30th. But the tax bill you get is based on the town's numbers, which are on a calendar year basis. So the town has their budget, they take our numbers. But the timing of the taxes, you know, our new year taxes, you see half of those this year and then you'll see the other half next year. So, and then the additional complication was everybody went through a revaluation. I want to say this. Yeah. So there was a revaluation done in the town this year. So the tax rate is now very different. Your tax rate was 5. something last year, now it's 1.493. So, but you need to look at the property average value of a home also changed. It went from $150,000 to $479,900. So everything, like your numbers are very different. So it's hard to say apples to apples. So what I do is I say, well, what's the multiplier? Your, the overall valuation of all the properties in the town went up by three point, three point something. But the value of a house went up by a multiplication of a little different, lower. So your, this is, this is math. Numerator and denominator. So when you look at the price going up on the numerator side, but the, what it's spread out over by the denominator, because your value is based upon all of the values in the whole town. So if all the values went up by more percentage-wise, let's say they went up, okay, make it a lot simpler, but it's not like this looks. Let's say they went up by four times what it was. And your house went up multiplied by three times. Then you're going to see less of an increase than somebody else whose value went up by maybe five times. Okay? Am I making a little bit of sense?
Okay.
So now, our taxes are going up on a 3.77% over the course of a fiscal year. This year, you'll see half of that. Next year, you'll see the other half of that. Now, because of the way that the taxes are calculated, it could, and I stress could, if your house is an average house and it used to be valued at $150,000 and now it's valued at $479,900, that's the average house. If you are one of those people that have that average house, you could actually see a decrease because the denominator of all of the assessed values increased more than the numerator of all of the individual house values. Okay? It's a very hard concept to grasp. But when you look at your tax bill and you look at the rate you get, then you might want to take that number and look at what the value is of your house. And then you can make that calculation for yourself. Okay? I'm sorry you said complicated and it's, yeah. I hope I tried to simplify it.
Well, on that note. I'm sure there are.
It's a complicated part.
Yes, so I'll open it up if there are questions from the board on our preliminary budget. Again, we may focus on understanding the big-ticket items and to be able to compensate.
Just an important process. The board will ask, can ask questions now. We have the budget. Then we'll do the report after care presentation. The board has an opportunity to discuss that. Then we go to board committees and then public comment. So our progress is going to take a little walk, get to the public. Public will then have the opportunity, of course, to comment on anything they'd like to determine.
They want to.
There's just the rest of the process. Okay, so this is the board having our budget.
I'm listening. I don't have a question. I have a comment. I, just to put Linda's discussion or explanation into context. If I understand it correctly, because of higher tax assessments in the town, it's been building in the town, the average tax on the average house is going to go down. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. This will be the third year in the last six or seven in which the taxes from the town, based on the schools, most of the budget is the schools, will have either gone down or stayed the same. In 2018, it went down. Last year was essentially the same, depending how you calculated it. I calculated it went down by $10 a year or something. And this year will also go down. So we definitely hear from people about the high taxes and that going up. This year, they're not going up, they're going down. I think that's very important for people to hear and to understand.
Questions or comments in the budget?
Yeah, it was great, even though it was a lot of committee ratings. Thank you to the other board committee. It was really exciting to see all the fantastic things that were going on in the district. So the, as Mark said, the 3.7 is not the amount that the property taxes will go up. So it was 1.77% the exemption, I didn't quite understand, for the healthcare. There was a healthcare exemption?
Yes.
You know, we've used that before. We've used that my first three or four years on board. We use that almost every year because the healthcare costs from 2015, 16, 17, 18 were also going up by enormous amounts, 15%, 14%. This year, 15.6%, that's a million, about a million dollars, which is an enormous amount because it's crazy.
Any other questions or comments?
Very pleased. Thank you.
I wanted to.
I mean, not the ultimate presentation that I ever give, but I guess, you know, I think we're now, I mean, we're grateful, honestly. The increase in state aid and the fact that they're getting even that much closer to the actual funding formula that they proposed many, 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 many years ago. I know some other school districts are not, they receive some large cuts. There's some legislation out there to help them, but, you know, I'm only speaking for us and I'm grateful that they're getting closer to the funding formula, which allows us to continue the wonderful work that we're doing and expanding some of our programs and offerings. So we're very excited about that.
I just wanted to thank Chris and the other members of the committee, and Christina and Linda and all of our administrators. We went, every administrator in the district, we went through every line item. There's a lot of lock items to look for. What are we spending? What should we be spending? What can we spend? And we've done this for years, but it's a very laborious, after-hours job. So I really appreciate the work that our staff and administrations have done. So thank you.
And I will say for the community, the board's Finance and Facilities Committee is a tough, is a tough committee to present. Well, there all are. But imagine as an administrator, you're sitting there essentially helping defend your budget and the particular items that you feel that are in the best interest of the students in your building or in your department and things like that. So it can be nerve-wracking, you know, to make sure that we're all aligned to the same, you know, philosophical beliefs in terms of the strategic plan and our goals and objectives and meeting our level criteria. So thank you for being so detailed and invested in the district budget.
We move on to another presentation. About our board after care program and what some thoughts regarding that moving forward.
We're going to see multiple screens here. All right. So my second presentation of the night is on the before and after care. I'm going to call it a business because that's what it is. So we've been calling it a program, but I think a program is misleading because it's a business, not a district program. It's a district business. So tonight, I'm going to present some information about the business to give you some background. In addition, I'm going to share some of the financial information, which I know has been shared throughout the past, you know, at least since last year when we were losing money in our PNL statements, profit loss statements. So I know this has been something that's been communicated periodically by the board's Finance and Facilities Committee. In addition, I'm going to share some issues and concerns about running this business and some recommendations for next year. So first, why I'm calling it a business? So it's actually what we call in the industry, an enterprise fund. So it's a Highland Park Public School Enterprise Fund, which means that it's not funded by the district operational budget. It's a business operating under the umbrella of the Highland Park Public School District. So some districts, so there's no state requirement to offer a before and after care program. That is a district decision on what they want to offer in addition to what they want to offer. So we offer an in-house enterprise fund in which the operations that are financed and operated in a manner similar to a private business or operation. So the DOE actually defines enterprise fund as operations that are financed and operated in a manner similar to a private business operations. What our program provides or what the business provides is childcare services for families before school starts and after school ends. So it's childcare before school and childcare after school. And a little bit of history, as I dug up through the works of my research, was that it actually used to be, we used to have in-house the childcare program and also summer camps. The summer camp program used to be in-house and managed by the teen center many, many years ago. A couple of superintendents ago, a superintendent that I won't name because I don't really want to hear the name anymore. But a couple, a couple of superintendents ago apparently gave the borough the summer camps. So they, we, I guess, moved it out of the district to be managed by the borough. So now our summer camps are run by the borough. And then the childcare program was pulled out of the teen center and given to that superintendent, this is the opponent at the time. And then sort of given to his secretary, my secretary now, to like kind of sort of manage. So that was sort of the, my understanding of the movement of this business from one department to another. So that's what you see here. So the corporate superintendent started in the district. The camp was given to the borough and childcare services was removed with no administrative oversight. So it was just given to a secretary that, you know, managed this for us. So that person managed collections and registration. And then the site managers began managing the business. So our current structure, so we have two site managers. We have Ms. Braver, who manages our Irving program, and Ms. Resia, who is the operator of the business at Barbell. In addition, it's mostly Highland Park Public School staff that serve and work in the program. We do have some staff that come that aren't, that aren't employees during the day, but very minimal. Most of them are our current staff. We have somebody that does collections and registration. And besides the site managers, obviously, we have our staff. We have the regular staff, there are staff for special ed students. So if they need a one-to-one para, that staff, if they need a nurse, we staff them with a nurse. So we're fully engaging compliant in terms of our accessibility. In addition, last year, I implemented an on-call administrator. So what I was finding was that all of the business issues that were happening ended up falling on me. And so I would get the calls and have to tackle it, which was fine, but there was no, I would realize there wasn't a lot of oversight in terms of managing the program. So I implemented an on-call administrator. So it's a staff member that has a supervisor certificate, that's looking for some administrative experience in the school district. And so they're on-call as needed. The issue I've found with that is that it's a member of the same bargaining agreement as the most of our staff members. So I still have to be involved and conduct investigations when issues So, I still have to be involved and conduct investigations when issues have occurred, uh, because they can't investigate people within their own unit during the day. So, there have been some, some, so we've been trying to put in some on-call administration oversight for this business, um, but, uh, it's been partially successful. So, some of the, uh, fiscal information. So, um, obviously, there is a fee structure that has to happen for any business to stay in business. Um, and what happens, what we've found is that to, to the knowledge of anybody that has had any workings of this program, it has never changed. The fee structure has been the same since at least the early onset of this program, which means that inflation has come and gone, the pandemic has come and gone, right? Costs have increased in food and resources, and we've never increased these rates ever. In addition, we offer several options for days and frequency. So, you can bring a couple of children and there's a discount. You can come for one day, two days, three days, four days, five days. There's an option too for one hour at a clip. So, if somebody just needs one hour, they can pay a fee for one hour. So, there's some flexibility with days and frequency. In addition, I know we've communicated the financial constraints of running the business. Um, we had a surplus in that account. The business had a surplus that was making, um, some, some good revenue, except the, um, pandemic depleted the account because, um, a previous administrator agreed to pay everybody, which was awesome, paying everybody during the pandemic when we weren't open for business. So, the, the, the people running and being part of the business were still getting paid, but we weren't bringing in any revenue to the, to the business. So, I mean, thinking about it in terms of that, if your revenue, because the district operational budget can't supplant that. So, if the business isn't making any money, it is losing money, then we have to cut things from the program because the district operational budget can't sustain that. Um, so it's important to understand the fee structure that we have in our district includes the following considerations. So, includes students on free and reduced lunch. So, we have options for free and reduced lunch cost to families in need. However, that's subsidized by, um, by the cost collectively for our full-paying, uh, families. In addition, we have extraordinary services, like I said, such as one-on-one paraprofessionals and nurses. Um, in addition, there's snacks and programming. So, I know that the business hires, uh, staff to do tutoring and extra help. Um, so, all of those are included in the financial information. So, I'm not gonna go through the chart, but, um, when the presentation goes out to everybody tomorrow on the district's website, you can review the, um, current tuition rate. Like I said, has been, um, in, in, in effect since as long as anybody can remember the program being in effect. Um, uh, my understanding is that many, many years ago, there was a push to try to increase the rates, uh, but it wasn't successful. But these are our current tuition rates. And then in terms of the programming, what, uh, the programs have to offer at Bardell. They offer gym for open play. They offer time to our students to complete any homework or work outside of the classroom. They offer them a snack time and they get art. And at Earthland, they have anywhere different, depending on the grade level and, and the day. Uh, they have outside time, gym, game room, or what they call creative play. So, it's the, uh, different options for play and they get snack. Um, I know I've already kind of briefly touched on a couple of the issues and some concerns, at least from my perspective. Um, some of them are there's no observation or evaluation process of the staff. So, from our, um, collections to the site managers, to assistant site managers, to the staff, anybody involved in the program, like there's no observation or evaluation process. So, I would, you know, nobody really knows if people are doing a good job or not a good job. There's no collection process of that. Um, in addition, my understanding is staff are not really, um, equipped or trained in supply-saving techniques unless they have it as part of their work during the school day. So, some of our paraprofessionals, for example, are handle and care-trained because they are trained in their role during the school day. But like I said, not all of our staff are, not all the staff in the before and after care program are our daytime staff. So, I'm not sure if those other staff that come to us and are not have any training in any of this. Um, I have no idea, because there's no records online if they are. Um, uh, again, staff are not all trained in handle and care, which is our de-escalation and restraint techniques. And the de-escalation techniques are really, really important to diffuse the situation. Uh, again, if they are trained by us during the day, then that's kind of, there's no additional training for those staff. Um, and we do have a higher rate of students with challenging behaviors in, in the program. Um, and if you're standing around my office, sometimes it is just a lot of, you know, um, there are no, not as much de-escalation happening, um, during those situations. In addition, we do have children being left sometimes until six, the seven P M. So, the program ends at six. Uh, so we do have students that are unfortunately left behind, in which case we do unfortunately have to call the police if, if a child is left behind. We try to communicate to the families and to their, uh, verbally contact and all that. No one's coming for the students. So, um, they are charged beyond the six P M time. If we have to wait a little bit longer, there is a charge with that because again, these people work, it's an hourly days of business, right? And, and so that's, that's important. We do have, um, issues like that. I mean, we have a ton of issues of, of liability in terms of understanding policy, understanding procedures, the training, and, and things like that. So, there are definitely a, a bunch of issues, um, you know, getting called at seven P M on Friday night, um, about, you know, about an issue and because there's, there's no, there's no oversight. So, it's all coming to me, which is fine, except that I have no, um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not running the business. I'm running the business of the school district, but I'm not running the business of an enterprise account. They're two different things. So, again, the, the issues and, and liability is a, is a huge concern from a superintendent's perspective for the board of education. So, what I did was I looked at some comparison rates across local districts. Uh, so I know the board has been talking about increasing the fee regardless, um, of the situation, because like I said, it's never been raised. And you can see that respectively, our costs are of the lower, of the ones that we were able to collect. I think Spotswood is, is slightly lower, uh, but other than that, um, we're, we're the lower end compared to South River, but touch in. Um, and, you know, what I saw in another district that offers, um, Catholic charities was, was another one. So, we were just kind of looking at some rates of what, um, other, other districts are, are offering. What you need to note is that their fee structures are probably based on a myriad of factors as well, such as like the number of students that they predict are free and reduced lunch in there, covering their costs. They don't know what kind of programming they're running and how much that costs. They don't know where they're buying their snacks and food, right? So, I mean, how much they're paying their staff. So, I mean, there's a bunch of factors that go into the rates, but it is important to know that we are definitely on the lower end of, um, of the rates. And you can see that some people don't even offer, like, brain down rates. Like Spotswood, for example, doesn't offer, like, they have one, you know, for before care. You know, it might just be an all-inclusive, like, you pay and that's it. Versus how many times you come. You can see that four days, three days, two days, like, that's not an option. So, you can see that there's definitely some, um, some variety in, in what's being offered as well. But again, just to show you that we are the lower end. So, with all that being said, I have, uh, I've been exploring, um, sort of two options for, um, for the board to consider. One is that the Highland Park Public School District continue to run the business, but hire somebody to run the business. So, that might be, for example, an assistant principal, um, that may have a schedule of ten to six or something like that at Bardell. Um, so they would be able to support Bardell, um, you know, for, for some of the day and help them snap out with various needs. But they are predominantly also hired to run the business. That cost would have to be absorbed in the budget of, well, some of it, not all of it, but a portion of the, um, salary would have to be considered in the fee structure of the aftercare program. So, the district operational budget would cover X amount of this, that staff member's salary because they're working for the, the school district during the day, X versus a certain amount percentage. And then the other percentage, that money has to come out of the aftercare fund. And so, we would particularly post for that position that has experience running a childcare business. So, they would know what is the training that has to be done? How often does the training have to be done? How are we evaluating people? How are we making decisions? And they're the ones that are, are running the business. So, that's one recommendation. The other recommendation is to consider going out for, um, proposals to see if there is a company that can run the business, so outsourcing it, um, that can run the business, maintaining our amazing staff, um, and that has access to, to a plethora of more resources. So, um, regardless, both of them are gonna come with an increase in, in rate, uh, which like I said, we've been communicating for the past couple of months in board meetings. So, I put together, um, and I put together what we look like as the, the potential fee structure comparison, so that, um, the board has enough information to, to make some, at the start of some considerations here. Not a decision, but considerations. So, this would be the tuition rate comparison. So, you can see the black is our current fee structure and the red is with a thirty percent increase. So, this would be with an assistant principal, a thirty percent increase. Again, we have not raised rates in forever, ever. So, in order to cover it with the cost of having someone who actually run a business, that's what we would have to, to charge. Um, if we were to outsource to an organization, so this is just one example. Now, we have not put out, uh, uh, bids yet. To go to bids is not lock us into anything. To go out for proposals just means that people can bid on our specs. And there might be a program that can come in at a cheaper option or a cheaper rate. This just happens to be one of them. This is a company called Right at School, um, that I know is used by Scott Plains and South River and a bunch of other districts in New Jersey. One of the things I wanna highlight, so they, you can see that they're at about the same increase in the cost, and you can see our current pricing to what Right at School would be off, charging families. But one of the things that I put, I want to draw your attention to the blue arrow, to the, I shouldn't have done the red, it'd really make it stick out, but, um, there are some things that these outsourced organizations can offer a school district or families in our school district that we can't. And one of the things I want to highlight here is accepts government subsidies. These organizations have access to money to help families in need with childcare that the school district does not have access to. I cannot go get government subsidies for families on free and reduced lunch. And we have families that cannot even afford, that have free lunch, that can't even afford to, to send their children. So, right now, we don't charge them. But I, I can't run a business, or we can't run a business by doing that to everybody because I don't have access to those government subsidies. So, that is a highlight. They offer obviously, you know, some, some different options too in terms of discounted rates, drop the grades, um, they can even offer childcare during non-school days, which we can't offer because my staff, they're contracting employees through a union. So, it gets kind of hairy if they're also working for us for this enterprise account, even though it's an independent business, they're still operating as Highland Park staff. So, I can't have them here closed. But an outsourced company would be able to offer that. They offer some over the summer too, which our program doesn't offer. So, they do have some more, um, robust offerings. Like I said, they will hire our staff. So, you can put that in a proposal and say, we want you, we want it to be our staff, if we love our staff, hire our staff, and they will. Um, they offer training and mentorship for the staff that they do. So, some of the things that you'll see here highlighted that we're not currently doing in our business is entry and crisis response training. They do training and mentorship for child and staff safety. They do training on abuse and neglect signs and mandated reporting. They do, uh, training and mentorship on child development, on positive guidance, curriculum delivery, leadership and management, and supporting students with challenging behaviors. Um, in addition, they offer, for example, this particular company, I just happened to pull up like so many of the other companies out there. They offer a robust amount of, of programming. So, I put up our programming, so you can see our programming, that a whole snack and some play. Um, this particular company, for example, offers, uh, what they call a town hall and a snack which is basically a check-in with the students. There's like a check-in, check-out. Um, it's built on the CASL framework for S E L, uh, social emotional learning competencies. So, there's a check-in and a check-out. There's snack, there's the right moves, they have a fitness blast, they have homework help, they offer daily enrichment, health wellness and fitness fund, and self-directed inquiry. Uh, like I said, they're curriculum-aligned with the social emotional learning competencies. And they offer seasonal curriculum through the daily enrichment, um, in some of the health wellness and fitness fund. For example, I looked on their website and fall, they had rev it up and had mega makers. So, they were doing STEM work, um, with the students. So, each season, it looks like they get some different options for enrichment and, and self-directed inquiry activities. So, very structured, um, opportunities for, for learning with fun. So, with that being said, you can kind of see a comparison of sort of those pros and cons for, for both options that I wanted to put out there. And my recommendation would be for the board to consider the request for proposals and bids at this point, um, to consider all the options before making a decision. So, by approving at least tonight the request for proposal, it just means we're putting it out for a proposal. We would then form a committee of multiple stakeholders, look at the proposals, and we can compare to the proposal for keeping the program as an enterprise fund. And then we can make a decision after reviewing the information. As a way to support our, uh, families. So, I will look it up in the board for questions or comments.
And sorry. So, thank, thank you for, of the very detailed information. That was really helpful. Um, I, I personally don't feel like I'm fair to commit to anything whatsoever or anything. It's a big, big lot for studying. But in terms of, I mean, the price increases that we're looking at under other plan, our state given in, that's gonna be tough for families and not just, you know, free and reduced lunch families. When, when you talk about grants offered by some of these organizations, is that for people who are like below their income level? Would it, would it apply to some of our, you know, wealthier, more middle-class, not free and reduced lunch students? Will they also be able to get assistance? What do these grants look like?
Yeah, so, so it depends. I'm not familiar with the, the, um, government subsidies and, and grants, but, um, we can certainly ask for proposals for them to put that, put those list of offerings together. So, reviewing proposals, we can see what those options are to know if that's a good move for families.
Yeah, no, we need to, right, we need to know the actual process. Families would likely do, you know, how much, so the application paperwork on their part and the family's part.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, the, um, these organizations do have people on staff that help them complete, and they have people on staff that speak, um, multiple different languages as well to help families complete the necessary paperwork to, to get it done. And then what they do is they said that it takes sometimes a couple of months for it to be processed, but they don't charge them, you know, like while the process is happening. So, they don't have to pay any kind of full rate or anything like that. So, they work with the families, um, to be able to provide the, the childcare that they need while their pay mortgage is being, um, handled.
Yeah, I assume they get a, a sort of a, a track, a payment, something like that.
State.
Yeah. Agency state, whatever.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great to find out what the actual, okay.
Let's leave with that on the, on the proposal.
Right, right, yeah. I, I have a contact in the, in the district and a union county. And they go, so the subsidies are through the Department of Education. They have a, uh, uh, each county has a organization, two, that the, uh, that the Department of Educate, let me speak into the mic, that the Department of Education funds. So, in this specific district, students that are on free and reduced lunch pay nothing. I mean, we give them reduced rate, they pay nothing because the DOE is picking up the tax through these organizations. But that also means that since the families that can pay are not subsidizing the families who can't, cannot pay, the overall rate for everyone goes down. So, the families that are free and reduced school lunches aren't paying at all, and the families who are, um, able to pay are paying a lower amount. Um, and of course, one of the reasons that our numbers are on the very low end currently, I, I looked at inflation rates from, um, uh, you know, the, the federal government's numbers on inflation over the last fifteen or twenty years. Um, inflation would have us, uh, given the current rates we're paying, which have never gone up, we would be the highest on the list if we had, you know, had, you know, inflation, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So, this is probably a good time for us to at least look at what can we get from an organization. So this is probably a good time for us to at least look at what can we get from an organization who's officially getting the DOE money to, to, to support the families that can, cannot pay, who need, who need this program and the budget.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I think it's, personally, I just want to say, it's really an excellent idea to find out and also, in either case, have a full-time administrator, or at least a most time administrator, to make the program more robust than it's been.
So the administrator, we talked about, you know, potentially AP at Barham. How would you envision this person's tenure times? Like, would it be mostly AP work?
Well, if, if it was a 10 to 6 situation, it might be like a 60-40 or 50-50. Like, they might need time when they get into, you know, they might not actually start until 11 or 12 doing like AP work. They might need an hour or two in the morning to do business work, or something like that. And then, you know, maybe, you know, three, three hours or something like that, and all the Barham three or four hours. And then, you know, the other time, so it might be 50-50 or 60-40 or something like that.
So significant amount would still be like during the day school, right?
Yes, yeah.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
I have a, oh, it's just a quick question. First, can you share this to the drawing, because I had a hard time with the numbers. We, I didn't see it in the drawing.
Yeah, it was hard to figure it out.
All right, I'll just put it there, yeah.
Oh, thank you, thank you. And then, I wanted to ask about the.
So the email to the board.
Yeah, my board notes, if there's also a previous meeting.
Also, we're like in the notes, I can tell.
Yeah, I just said, I put it in the board notes.
I could probably take some of the family earlier.
That's okay, that's okay. Let's just straighten up.
Okay.
I don't spend any time on those board notes, no.
Sorry, it's been a long night of presentations, I have to go.
Yeah, that would probably be nice.
It's okay.
Well, I mean, first, yes, I, I like Mark to feel like it's a good time to start looking at possibilities for outsourcing. I mean, honestly, some of the information you shared about what's happening and the concerns that we have are legitimate. We hear it, I think probably all the state and local with our friends who have students, but children in the program, or our own favorite children who are in the program. And what happens after school does impact the culture in our schools during the day. So if we have children being handled in a way that just goes in great, against the rate what we're trying to do in terms of establishing a better culture of care and therapy support, stored at work, this is contributing to enjoying that work, I think. So I, to me, I feel like just, I think the qualitative aspect of programming, that we can trust that, rules economically in school way, benefits everyone that's certain futures to overturn in school way. Because I know it's a business, technically, these are our children, they're in our schools. If this is happening in our, on our school property, so theirs, in their minds, is all a part of the school, right? Their school experience. But it's really important that we kind of just focus on that, on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so was the AP figure, was that on the basis of the AP assistant principal for Barham?
I'm sorry, the one finger?
The, the, so then, in the estimate, maybe this is, but the, for the assistant principal at Barham, is the idea that they would be the person that would be hired as the administrator?
Yeah, so we would post that, that they have childcare business experience.
And when, when do you expect to post that job?
That would be.
With decide.
Well, we have to decide. I mean, I can't post a job that I'm not intent, so there's no job posting down because I don't know if we're offering it or not. So what we would do, the, oh, so next steps is, once we approve tonight the request for proposals, we will go through, that will be posted publicly. People will submit their proposals. We'll put a committee of multiple stakeholders together, we'll get some of the people that run the program, we'll get some parents that utilize the program, some board members, myself, whatever. We'll go through, there's like, they give you, you know, usually a rubric and a ranking, we'll review the proposals. We can look at it against the in-house model. From there, we need to make a decision. If we find a company that can offer more robust programming and a cheaper rate and more access or something like that, then we can go and formally accept that proposal, we can, you know, do a presentation on that. In which case, then I wouldn't post for that. But if we want to keep the in-house, then I would have to post for it.
Then you, you went for most of that at all, because I thought we were hiring assistant principal.
Right, well, but, but, but the posting would be different. If I, right, because I, if I'm posting something that's a 60-40 split or 50-50 split, I need somebody that actually has experience running a childcare business. If I'm hiring just a full-time assistant principal at Barham that's full-time assistant principal, then they just need that experience versus being able to run a childcare business.
Yeah, the other question I had was about, what, what is the, it's not called a solicitation, what is it called again?
A request for proposal, R and P.
Yeah, request for R and R and P. What does it look like? I mean, do you say we want somebody to run a program for one, two, three years? Do we want, like, do you specify the options, or do you just leave it sort of open and they, you can touch it with energy?
Lynda, do you want to jump in?
Well, it's a one-year contract with the option to renew. And with a professional service, it can be an indefinite renewal. Other contracts are limited to five years, or one with three, one year renewals. But I believe that this would not restrict. Wouldn't have to go half for, do our R and P every, let's say, five years if we're happy to improve. They're going to have to be evaluated every year and decide to renew it.
And do you specify the options that you want them to offer at the beginning? And do you say you want them just to offer them one day a week, day one, or one hour?
Yes, we would have, many, many page long, especially, like six pages long, specifications, missing a lot of details. And that would be included.
With, with that would include some of the concerns, we have an email about serving students with disabilities in the after-school program that the R and P would include.
Yeah, that it have ADA compliant and like all the training, all those, you know, robust curriculum programming, you know, that kind of thing.
Well, no, I mean, we're compliant with, but like, I, I appreciate that you have some.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, because we'll have to include that, that we have, you know, nurses, that we have one-on-one parent professionals, that we have, you know, certain criteria that, that our population that we need to meet. We would put that in there. And like Lynda said, it's about 60 pages long of all of our specs, you know, which is important. So that they also know too, space, like how much space is available for, you know, like this is what we, basically, it's like, here's what we do, who wants the bid line?
Right, right.
Does that make sense?
Yep, absolutely. I didn't know it was so long in detail.
Yeah.
Michelle wants to speak.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I left my camera off because my computer is not doing great. But I wanted to know how we could go back to the management system that we had before Susan took over at the direction of our former superintendent. Because I thought, you know, it would be ideal if we could have someone to oversee the program, not so much manage it in terms of paperwork and, you know, administrative type things, but to, to oversee it in a way that it could be a little more reflective of our values at, at school during the day. Because I'm not, I'm not sure if, of understanding, you know, what we would be getting in terms of hiring this out. You know, so it seems like keeping it as in-house as possible in terms of, I guess, curriculum or values, or wherever you want to say, making sure that it's, it's a Highland Park after-school program and not just an after-school program, if you know what I'm saying. Yeah, so that was my only questions about kind of curricular management versus administration.
So I, I will say that because it was managed to the teen center, I do know there was significant cuts with the DCF one day, but I don't think that's an allowable use of the, right now, the majority of the teen center's salary is, is part of the funding we get from the Department of Child and Family Services, is part of the SB YSP grant, the school-based youth services program, which I know I spoke about at the beginning of the year when they were trying to cut the funding and cut our mental health support. We saved the funding for another year with the guys who were trying to figure out how they even take in the mental health funding as part of our operational budget, so that we don't have to rely on the stress of the DCF cutting our robust mental health program. So right now, it's not something that I could put back on Elizabeth in her office, just because we are not allowed to. So I think regardless, I, if we keep it in-house, I mean, it doesn't have to be an assistant principal, that would be just my recommendation, since they would be working out of that building, but we have to pay somebody to do it, because right now is not allowable use for us. Because remember, it's an enterprise fund, so I have to pay somebody out of that fund. So the price would have to increase regardless of who manages the program.
It would have to increase regardless because we're hiring another person.
Or, or if I'm giving, so if I put, even if I put it out to the principals now, or somebody, an administrator, right? An actual administrator, not a teacher with supervisor, if anything, and I say, okay, I'm going to pay you, I don't know, whatever, however many hours, six hours a day for business, six hours a day, times five days a week, whatever, I'm going to give you $30,000, $40,000 a year extra to run this business. Well, then I could put it out to the administration and say, okay, who wants to make this money? But I still need to figure out those costs. But that would be something that I'd have to, I'm still bound by another union, I have to go to the HPAA and they navigate that. And now I'm, you know, again, it's, now I'm telling, telling a administrator who's probably here since 7:00, 7:30, 8:00 AM, now they have to also be here till 7:00 PM, or 6:00 PM or 6:30 for this program, versus somebody who has a little bit more flexibility with their time than, than around like 10:00 or something like that, you know? So we have options.
Yeah, and, and the concern now, I mean, I understand that like, these programs, if we were to adopt one of them, or accept a bid, you know, they offer like more robust curriculum and so forth, you know, potentially more training in certain areas. Is the problem now with the administrative part, is it, it's just not working out with our current limited employee resources?
Yeah, because, so I do have somebody who is an on-call person, but they're not, they're just somebody on-call to help with, you know, parent complaints and things like that. They're actually not running the business. And now, most of the time, if there's issues with staff members, that person can't even do it because they're in the same bargaining agreement as these people during the day. So now it's, it's on me. So I, you know, an issue happened on Friday, and that was my call Friday at 7 o'clock. And then, you know, the Monday, not much I could do over the weekend. And then first thing on Monday, I had to come in and I had to change my schedule around to conduct the investigation, which is fine, you know, that's part of my job, but conduct the investigation while the supervisor was able to talk to maybe some of the students, then we'd be, you know, on, here's, here's my directive. But it has to come from me, because they're not legally allowed to do that.
Even when they're working for an enterprise fund, and, I mean, we always talk about how the after-school program is like separate from Highland Park. So, but, but they still can't.
It, it, but it is, but it's not because they're in all the same bargaining agreement during the day. So it makes it very challenging to separate the two things.
So it's not necessarily illegal, but it's like weird and awful.
Weird, weird and awful, yes.
Weird and awful, okay, got it.
And the union does have to put it back.
I'm sure, I'm sure, no, I can see where it would come with the relationship.
Yeah.
It just doesn't, you know, my point is that if all were equal, you know, find out once we get bids, if we could take this responsibility, walk the plate of our government administration, or Dr. Coatsy or anybody else, there are a lot of other things that need to be doing, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Restudates and some of the things we want to keep moving forward. If, if it was all equal, we'd feel better, opposed to equal, feel better, I think, from the perspective of how our staff operates to have an outside organization doing it, taking you all. And I think liability also, you know, coming to liability, I think becoming to liability of this, of our agency, a corporation or company, I guess, comes to do it. So that's just about the thing, wants to be better, bids is more better, I guess.
So we would obviously still be sued if something happened during. So, but I mean, the idea, the legal theory would supplement it. I'm not sure how.
We would have to put more things in place, obviously, you never know what's gonna happen, but we made the efforts and put.
More precautions.
I feel like it's a new situation. And what our, I don't think this is gonna happen, but.
Right, right.
Just, just on the piece of possibility.
Yeah, no, great, thank you.
I'm sorry, just one quick thing I forgot to mention. The children being left, like, I know this happens, you can skip the plate, I'm just a little bit like that. I, it's just, I guess, my mind to, well, how big a problem is this? When using your bullet point list of, you know, issues and concerns and, you know, what, what, you have more data?
I mean, I don't have the numbers, but, I mean, I get calls more often than not of, of that happening, of that, that we had to do, because I, because anybody knows that if police are called, I do need to be called. So they need to know why the police are, are coming here and, yeah, I mean, it's, it's unfortunate. Really unfortunate.
Would an outside conflict be able to, I mean, would that change, or they just like?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what, but I don't know what their protocol is. I, I don't know, and that would be part of it, is right, looking at what their protocol is for how they handle students that are, are left behind, I don't know. But again, it was, our protocol is whatever they done, I don't have, like, because there's no board policy, there's no, I mean, we govern our, we govern under board policy, but in terms of the aftercare, policy for aftercare is not robust enough that it really gives us a roadmap. So it's, it's basically what the administrators do during the day, is what Ms. Rayburn, Ms. Grecia do as business owners, and alligators.
Yeah, I, I know you didn't have the numbers, but maybe at some point, we could get a little bit more data on just, you know, what some of the populations may be. Also, talking about is what happens to students, we're talking about, what's the frequency like, it's, I don't think, it's alarming.
Yeah, absolutely, the kids are in a mountain position.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, this is, these are things that you spill over to the perception that kids have when they walk back to a school building and that's kind of like how they're being escorted.
Absolutely.
Oh, so, so, oh, I'm sorry, I'm coming up, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to get that happen.
Are we able to move on, or is it more?
Well, and one more comment, I'm just sure you're all dying to hear. So I mean, it's, I wonder if the R and P could include, you know, if, if we have a lot of students that will get in one by six, maybe we need to offer a setting care option.
Right, right, they're making it there, absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, we can ask for anything.
Oh, I'm hoping that we will ask for it, that's what I feel. That's interesting.
Yeah, we're taking, we're taking the pillows, okay?
Right, right.
Okay, anything else? All right, all right. I'm turning off my mic now.
We'll put on board members, then we have bid reports. Many of the studies covered last week, over the last week, so we're, we're going to go through our agendas, the objectives and what else, and then we will open up a comment, then we will do consultations. So we're going to start the curriculum instruction.
Yes. I'll, I'll, I'll have that in Alison's, so. So we have two new items, one is number two, approval of head reports. We have one report, and number, incident BS 2223, get 10. And we have number six, which is the approval of home instruction for two children which are on Villa. That's the only two. Any questions or comments? Okay.
Well, you do have a report, I think, right?
Okay, so I'll try to get to this quickly, just like, so, everything we just discussed. We met on March 16th, and we discussed the preschool expansion, latest update. Dr. Coatsy reported that there are 84 women registrations from that time. Eighty-four, we've seen forty families drop off their paperwork that, that day, and included, and we've seen assistants have completed the required lunch application by hand, which I hear is quite a doozy. Parents also had a meet and greet with Mr. Nally, Laura Stevenson, or the school secretary, and a few teachers as well. Assistance was also provided if translation is needed. Dr. Nicholas also reported that for the vesting place base will be built and provided either through district budget or the state funding. And I think most of this is probably covered already, so I don't want to go through anything already discussed. Did also, again, our discipline data reports. Dr. Nicholas brought in an overview of the OSS ISS patterns for February. I'm not going to get into those numbers now, just to save the time, but again, systematic patterns, seeing, Mr. Porcher, I'm seeing presentation of our Black, Latino, Hispanic, and students with disabilities in OSS and ISS. We talked about, actually, generally requested also, kind of go look at the socioeconomic data, our demographic data with that population as well. We, you know, this sort of led to, again, ongoing discussions were happening around if we say we're boosting therapy supports, culturally responsive supports for students with disabilities as well. And we, Dr. Coatsy reported that the professional development. Okay, Dr. Coatsy reported that staff have been working with a new consultant, well, not new to staff necessarily, but we were not aware, Ms. Brewster in the past, who has worked with staff, is now currently in talks with the administration to come and provide some summer RP training. And so I think that that's something that is in the works now, trying to come up with perhaps some plans for, again, have. again, having that service to support staff in programming that will hopefully also help our students who are, um, you know, struggling in various areas and they're impacting their discipline records. Uh, we also talked about the New Jersey Consortium for Equity Excellence and some of the professional development opportunities that are offered through that particular membership that we have as a district. Uh, Dr. Niko will be updating us their next meeting in terms of staff participation in those particular trainings. Uh, and then we also looked at, uh, or discussed, uh, just an item that Jen mentioned, that at last month's board of health meeting, there were high school student liaisons who discussed a few recently completed student surveys at the high school, one of which asked students what they know about restorative practices. Uh, and a lot of the high school students indicated, according to their study results or their survey results, that they didn't know what RP was, and they were requesting more students to give some RP instruction. So it's nice to be able to talk about professional development for adults, but now also thinking about, um, the students and their need to either kind of get refreshed her because of the pandemic impact of over the past couple of years in terms of cultural practices, or be introduced to it for the first time for some of the students. Uh, so we discussed the possibility that, um, our Dr. Koja actually not just discussed the possibility, but assured that she would look into providing some orientation to RP for students who, uh, need that at high school. Uh, then we talked about upcoming policies, which we all know on the horizon. Uh, we will be making administrative, um, uh, changes to our substance abuse policy, just having to revisit that, um, uh, due to the state's change in certain, um, substances. So we'll be looking at our policies and be wanting, as we did. Uh, and then we also will be, um, leaving off the service requirement of our high school regulation or policy change, or adjustment, I should say. So still moving forward with the adjusted requirements for credits. Um, the administration has decided to leave off the service requirement, just as they would do some logistics on that particular component of that policy change. Uh, and that is it.
I guess that is it for now. Questions for Moby?
Sure, sweet. I just wanted to add something really quickly, that, um, the fencing that you mentioned at Irving is really timely and wonderful because if you do the more true with classrooms, they're even taking up a lot of the black top space. At least it'll be replaced with some green space for the kids, at least. Um, we weren't sure that was definitely happening, but it's happening, but, you know, multiple ways we can fund it, but it's happening, so.
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna move on to finance facilities, and Chris, you do have a lot of things involved.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much detail people want to hear, so I would look angry to this one. But, so we just heard a presentation, uh, about the preliminary budget proposals, so let's. I know two is the, uh, the cap extension for the large increase in healthcare costs, hopefully with that exemption that a lot of people will see, have big tax, tax wise this year. Um, there is the capital reserve, various projects like the boiler and the electrical subway. Four is the maintenance reserve withdrawal for various projects like the bleachers, stairwells, security gates, fences at Bartle School Playground, and fencing at Irving Primary School. Five is the, six is the builders. Eight is the cafeteria treasures report. On ten is housing report, eleven is certifications. Um, for the preliminary finance report, twelve is the budget transfers. Uh, on item fourteen, uh, the new items are, uh, my neighbor Hannah Berg, uh, file the, uh, professional musicians file bank for file storage and book malicious for, you know, school books. And we, item twenty, uh, as we just discussed, uh, even though it might have been parents, that this is some kind of moving in some direction, in fact, it's not. All options are still open, and, uh, it'll be committee formed. I assume the parents who are interested in serving on that committee, should they contact you? Uh, twenty-one is approval of disposal of equipment. Twenty-two is the preschool program plan budget. Uh, twenty-three, uh, is the lease of two units with two classrooms each, but the modular classroom. So that turned out to be even cheaper than we were expecting, just a good job, you asked for. It's really reasonable, right, second. Uh, twenty-four is reserve fund balance. Uh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't cover the items that weren't in both, because they were covered in workshop last week. But feel free to ask any questions at all.
Questions for finance facilities? Sure, good. Okay, uh, we include the personnel and, uh, the bull ends.
Okay, let's go over the bull ends, which are two, um, blah, 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 please. One, two, three, four.
So eight, nine, eight and nine, I don't know.
Sorry. I thought I had, I thought it was already in there. Um, all right. So, and actually, number eight is a new one. I'd like to set that aside for a moment, and maybe other new ones first. Number nine, we have a new paraprofessional at Bartle. Twenty-four, approval of scheduled appointment. There is, hold on one second. Baseball, okay. Under the scheduled date chart on number twenty-four, take off Oke, I don't see Oke on the agenda. So I have a read in here, personnel before, uh, the baseball, proposed baseball coach is Benjamin Jacoby, Jacoby, not Cornelius McKeev. But as I look at my number twenty-four, I'm not seeing one of them. Where is McKeev?
Okay, it's not there, it's blank.
Yeah, that, this is, oh, from Mills, I'm sorry. This is from Mills, well, I didn't realize that was part of my header. Again, like, in any event, this, the proposed baseball coach for the middle school is Benjamin Jacoby. My apologies, man. Uh, number twenty-five, approval of staff to attend the incoming ninth grade orientation. We'll give some extra hours for, uh, three staff members. Twenty-six, approval of PB, professional development preparation, because I think hours, uh, for two activities, two professional development activities. And number twenty-seven, approval of after-school treatment team meeting. Um, those are for, okay, for our ADA program, so we have the clinician and all the other teachers and parents that have to gather to meet after school for those complicated classroom situations. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around, number twenty-one, I didn't realize was in both. Approval of change of staff for the Title One Irving STEAM program. Uh, we are going to have a new substitute staff program. Okay. Um, the one I had some concerns about, number eight, the middle school youth safety specialist. So this was a, uh, this was a necessity, a last minute change, because we needed to fill that position. We thought it had been filled. Um, so Dr. Niko's had to move quickly. It's my fault for not reading the agenda in advance on the sixteenth. I had not seen this until just tonight. Um, I'm sure this individual is a wonderful person. I'm a little concerned that we're hiring somebody who's a career corrections officer for this position. That does not really seem in line with our, the values we've been trying to inculcate. Um, it is, however, a little awkward to talk about that at the board table, uh, because it does involve potentially a confidential matter about a potential staff member. Um, but, I don't know, I'm not comfortable with that language that, I wish I had read the agenda on Thursday. And I wish, I wish we were hiring somebody who had a background in restorative practices or in social emotional learning, or in one of the areas that we discuss. In any end, we are, the agenda number eight is approval of a new youth safety specialist for the middle school, Jason Jablonski. That's the proposal, number eight.
Questions for personnel, or personnel gentleman?
Uh, I would just have to, I have safety specialist and a question about the, this personnel being at the position, who's in the background.
Did you, excuse me, you both have the same concern with the personnel who's in the high school?
It's not a question of.
Oh, we can't, you can't speak about this.
I'm pretty amazed.
Uh, we can't. I will, I will add in that, just thank, thank for all of our other official personnel, they both have the training. You have money set aside to provide training, um, for the staff member.
Of course, thank you. Any other questions or, okay, the other, uh, committee is aligned for policy, nothing in the high school graduations, I prefer to be, not about that last week. So now, we'll move back to public comments. Now, we'll move to public comments. Um, you back? For how the board of education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your appointments. Board policy, oh, one, six, four, and oh, six, seven, establish and regulate the writing of public debate meetings. So as we always do, this is a three-minute, uh, per speaker opportunity to, um, share your thoughts. Uh, when it's, when I call on you to spell your name and your address, uh, will you have a speaker in the room? So start in the room.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. Thank you, uh, Luciano, two, eight, North Third Avenue. Good to see everybody again. Hi, how are you? So the first time I was here, we used to talk mental health, sleep benefits regarding the, uh, earlier start times at, uh, Bartle. Last time I brought survey facts that did not reinforce your decision, and this time, we're gonna talk a little bit about safety. My daughter is, uh, currently in Bartle, is currently walking during a fairly well-laid time in the morning, between seven forty-five and eight, eight AM, feeling steady, well surrounded by many other children, including A period students, middle school, primary, and some parents. This is a walking town, it's one of the reasons why I moved to this town to begin with. Everything is fairly close within walking distance. My wife and family believe in an active lifestyle and encouraging our children to walk to school. My daughter has about a sixth mile, takes about fifteen minutes. On the far side of the town, we'd probably add another five to ten. As our daughter gets older, showing confidence in her independence by allowing her to walk on her own is important to us for her work. From early December to mid-January, on average, the sunrise doesn't begin until around seven twenty. You have not considered the sun will not be completely visible immediately. Factors like morning shadows, cloudy skies, icy conditions, and inclement weather decreasing visibility for both walkers and drivers. A fifteen to twenty minute, five minute walk with an arrival time of seven thirty to seven forty-five would require walkers to leave their homes between seven fifteen and seven twenty-five, well within the winter sunrise timeframe. Asking my children to walk in the crack of dawn in the winter, you're putting them in danger if walking, if walking, or now forcing me and many mothers to drive our cars for an unreasonably short distance. This would increase the traffic flow even more throughout town, exponentially increasing the risk of walking even more. Your proposal now forces my daughter to walk in the dark, in the shadows, or even worse, all alone. Hundreds of other parents are not comfortable with this idea whatsoever. My daughter and countless kids need extra sleep, extra time, and more light, and more eyes of accountability. Will you hold yourself accountable if you don't take these factors seriously into consideration and say, well, safety is compromised? Your proposal forces us to get up and out even earlier than we already struggle with. It baffles me, I can continue to stand firm for a start time change that there is no overwhelming support for outside of this board. Regarding the ongoing litigation against the Board of Education, the judge was misinformed. Let the record state that, yes, the high school and middle school was given ample time regarding start times, but no one from serving in Bartle was ever informed in a respectable, timely manner prior to the announcement in January. Please be sure to mention that to the judge. And let's not forget one last point, after you just gave the start of it, now I want to hear one last point. Then let's think about that you just now put hardship on these parents, not only you get them out the door more, but now to put them in after caring more, and surprisingly enough, make them actually pay more out of pocket and more to pay for that after, that after-school program. Keeping them even further away from their parents and costing them more in the long run. So please take that into consideration and end this litigation. Let's move on. And I, I'd like to know what your definition of what proposal is.
My time is up, sir. Your time is up.
I understand, but I want you to see how serious that I am.
We understand.
The title is, we are, because I don't know if you guys are listening. So please start to listen, because it's important, and it's safety for our children.
And your time is up.
By the way, I hope you're listening now. Thank you.
So you have some work that wants to be?
Hi, my name's Carly Draper, one twenty-six, Amherst Street. And I've worked in the Irving After School Program for about twenty years. And I've been the site manager for about seventeen. Seen a lot of changes through that time. So I just want to let you know, we, we, we did some cutbacks this year, we had to. And we really worked hard to try and make things work. Um, so just so you know, we also had to cut back on some of the things that we do. Um, we do, we did have a arts and crafts person, we did reading with our first graders, knowing that they had reading, not really homework to do, but some of them wanted to come home and be with their families, so our teachers would read with them. We also started doing kindergarten and reading time with them, story time. Um, and also, um, you know, just, we were able to do more, we had a great team come in and do programs with them. But that all had to kind of be scaled back this year, because we didn't have the money to do it. Uh, but I just want to tell you, I'm very passionate about the after-school program. Um, so I just want to tell you a little bit of my feeling about it, if that's okay. Um, so this is what, how I look at it. We offer the comfort of familiar faces, like Shane, draw pictures with the kids, Mr. Monty, who knows her car, before you even get out. Uh, Ms. Joyce, ready to give hugs, Ms. Linda, always willing to give a push on the swing. We provide consistency, um, we can follow through on the school expectations. We can support teachers, we add services, administration, and helping with all the. We are inclusive. Our program is a direct reflection of our diverse and close-knit, highly-parted community. We are a family. All are welcome to join us, and I call our students my kids, and I need it. I just ran into one of them in Walworth the other day, and my husband's who has that is in front of my kids. Um, so I'm asking you to keep our program running by the board today. Let's invest in the program, let's research options and other options and funding. Let's reach out to the community and parents. As I was sitting there, I reached out to my son who's a firefighter, and I said, hey, are you CPR trained? What can you do? Can you, can you figure out a way through the department to get someone else CPR trained? Let's continue to allow our children access to a program with amazing potential, led by educators and staff who care for them like they do their own kids. Thank you.
Thank you. There's more speakers in the room, most people are online.
Um, good afternoon. Hi, Cory. Uh, afternoon, everybody. Um, I just, um, sorry, uh, first of all, it's been awesome, I did the class. Uh, first of all, it's been awesome, and I did the class. Now, my, um, just my class, my issues, the modern fashions in Irving. Um, I heard today they show fencing, that seems to be a good solution. My concern with the, the, uh, modern classroom experience, in case some of you have been here, is that it will expand the number of students, I would consider to reduce the playing area. The playing area students can use, whether it rains or not. Uh, if you fence outside of Irving, because that's rain, kids will not be able to play there. In December, they cannot play in the playground. So I have an issue that there's not data on the impact, that the expansion, the more students in the school will have on the educational services, because we have less space in the playing area, less than fifty percent of the catch, or far more students. And no assessment, no data being collected on the educational impact of that. My other issue has come with the money, I'm just saying, divided for twenty-three. And it's saving three thousand, that's plus the monthly, uh, monthly lease, which, if my numbers are right, that will be a hundred seventy-nine thousand. which, if my numbers are right, that will be a hundred seventy-nine thousand over two years if we include this year. Plus, the four hundred thousand for the service hook-up and cost of the modular classrooms. What could be a solution, about more than half a million for something of two years? I think maybe should need more thinking, like maybe bring some other solutions, I think maybe go a Russian. If we have five years by the state to really think about solutions, maybe we should be taking one more year extra. Find solutions to address, you know, because some people need this. If I don't want to be anything particular with them, but at the same time, I'm really concerned with the lower of the quality that they're giving for the quality of education, because non-assessment have been done. And now, I'm really concerned about the financial impact of a solution that is just for two years. I think that it's over five hundred, like more than half a million for a two-year solution. It's a mixed concern, and that's why I would urge you to take more time before approving the modular classrooms being installed again. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Royski Lorenzo, I live at 440 Cedar Road. We're here, it's my first meeting, person, I do try to participate online. I do want to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education for offering these type of meetings. Thank you, it's very appreciative, especially to those who have children at home and can't be here in person. So, thank you for that. And listening to the agenda, and just giving an overview, we all care. We're here because we care. We care about the community, we care about the students. I do, like most others, have concerns. I have concerns, I wanted to come here before I even saw your agenda. And then, when I saw your agenda, I thought about the aftercare program. Ms. Carla, my son's in the aftercare program, she as well as others, you know, they're very dear and they're trained, there could be other issues that I'm not being aware of at the other schools. And I appreciate, I understand, that you do want to make considerations for outsourcing. That's fine, but, you know, and I heard, and I'm listening tonight, that you were considering, you know, staff to be involved and stuff, as long as you don't change. There seems to be, and one more concern, so I wanted to come here today, too many changes all at once. I understand, I'm not looking at the numbers behind the budget, but you have the mandates associated with the pre-K students and stuff. I would like more information on that, seeking in terms of providing, if it's not on website, maybe can be individual, just advise me if I need to email someone, where I can get information about the state mandate. You know, the citation of, okay, over the next five years, you know, we got to do this. Dr. Nicosia, I actually listened to your pre-K information meeting with Principal Manali. Learned a whole lot about a whole lot of things and stuff. One of my concerns was actually about the modular buildings. Okay, I understand, you made it perfectly clear, pre-K students can't be in the modular, they got to be in the classrooms. You got to have the kindergarten to the first graders and stuff. And one of my concerns was that, okay, New Year starts in September, you have the new students coming in. Fortunately, I have a child in the pre-K room, loves Irving, is familiar with Irving, not a concern. My concern is, you have these other poor students coming in, pre-K, first time in public school, and less than a month later, you have the influx of all the pre-K three and the pre-K four. And I understand, I'm not against it, I just am so concerned that there's too many changes happening all at once. I drop my son off every day. We've been going pre-K for, what, six months? I still see children that are crying going into the building. I see, I've had to help personally, help some students get into where they kind of resisted. They're just, you know, I know you guys have a lot on your plate, twenty seconds. Okay, thank you. Dr. Nicosia, I know it's very ambitious, you know, you stood up there, you know, I wanted to have this program, sixty students in year one and stuff. I'm not questioning your decisions on that, I'm just saying that maybe just take the consideration to slow down a bit. And also, I'd like to know, who might I would reach out to email for additional questions about things? Like, for example, the fencing, Jenny mentioned the fencing. Where in Irving, is it in the front of the building, on the garden area, is it around the corner? I don't really know, I couldn't tell you that, I know my time is up. But I just wanted to also say about what you guys were referencing about the survey on the committee before aftercare. I would be interested in that as well, I just wanted to mention that, so, thank you.
And for all our volunteers, as you can see, we're taking that proposal, we've got these notes, and does respond. If you don't respond to the proposal, then please, it's time that you guys got to talk to.
And some of mine are just quite, like, I just don't know who I'm supposed to respond to.
Mr. General, so you know, the information does go out to the...
In looking at nice way now, yes.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll follow, but always know that you can email me directly.
We're going to go to our hands online, and I think Elizabeth, I saw your hand first. Let's keep it organized and comprehensive, if you want to start, so then, that's where you go.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Elizabeth Wildinger, 1607 Avenue in Hyde Park. I'm saying, don't worry, again, I came on to listen to the proposed changes for the ASP program and to make sure that the ASP program, whatever happens with it, that it divides by the ADA and that you have a nurse on staff for kids with medical needs. But now, I'm seeing that there's a proposed three percent increase, there's a consideration of privatizing the program. I think both of these are absolutely horrific ideas, and I would love to see from the board table some reactions, some passions, some emotions, because these are things that are going to directly harm the families in this town, we have a very mixed income community. You're putting, you will, if this increase happens, ASP will be out of reach for families. If you privatize it or outsource it, or start calling it a business, that is gross, that is disgusting. And let me just say, my son's been in ASP since kindergarten, Carla Draper, who just spoke, she is the reason he got through Irving. It was entirely because of her that he was able to walk through those doors, that he was able to be at ASP and keep driving there, that was because of Carla. So that was what I was going to say, but then I hear that you're going to hire a former corrections officer who worked at the middle school, and like, with all due respect, like, what the hell are you thinking? You know, I'm a reporter, I cover prisons and jails. You know what I cover? I cover CEOs abusing people. That's their training, they're trained to look at people as the enemy. You cannot train that out of someone who is a career corrections officer. And again, I would love to see the board actually show some, I don't know, anger, disgust, that this district isn't even considering having someone like that in the district. I don't want that guy near my kid, and I don't want that guy near any student in the middle school. You know, he's already pulling a pension from the state, right? Why are you giving him a job? Why are you hiring a former corrections officer from a youth prison in New Jersey? Because I just looked him up, and that's who he is. Why are you hiring him to be around the students in this district? It is disgusting, it is wrong, and I urge everyone on this board to respond and forcefully say, "Absolutely not, we will not do that." And that's all.
Thank you. Sarah?
Yes, Sarah Pixley, 3 Grant Avenue. So again, I just want to echo that I really appreciate this forum as just a way to share our public concerns. And I think, you know, get our elected officials to hear our voice and really represent us. Because I think, you know, again, I just like Buffy, I helped on this, and hearing something very different than we thought we were hearing. And, you know, what we're hearing is, we're proposing a decreased aftercare and potentially charging for free lunch. We one of the largest populations in New Jersey, a proportion of the using free and reduced lunch. This is just on the heels of letting families of five hundred to six hundred lower school children bring their kids into school earlier. In the name of equity, walk in the dark under dangerous conditions, is what we've heard the past two weeks. Kids are really going to suffer, spend less time with their kids and more time in aftercare. So, you know, my very first question to the board with the earlier start times, I think, is a really logical one, which is, what does this leave for aftercare? And that was kind of brushed off, and now, there are creating situation where parents needing to rely on aftercare, starting earliest in the entire district at 2:15 for longer because of the changes. It was an obvious implication, one that would disproportionately affect at-risk under representative groups. So, just, I think, to what I spoke earlier, just compounding the increase in reliance on aftercare, all of these changes, increase in potentially cost for the food they consume, it's just absolutely catastrophic for those we say we're trying to protect. I mean, these two things together are really concerning, and everyone here should be on pretty high alert. You know, so we need a lot of questions answered, so let's just make it simple. Let's see the comparisons, cost to Addis City, Brunswick, Piscataway, other districts with similar socioeconomic profiles. What are those numbers? None of those were in the comparisons that were shown on the board. Also, we commit to communicating with increases in cost to those currently using aftercare. That is a knock-on starter for this, so they can have a voice. Also, I saw from salaries, we are increasing by proposed seven percent. So to me, that seems like it's part of the budget, if I'm understanding these numbers correctly. When the national average increase in merit salaries is two to three percent. So, where is that additional money going? It certainly could be in the increased personnel needed to run this program. So, all of these things, you know, we all all did for something different, and I would just say, we're all really listening now. So, I would hope you answer some of these questions.
Thank you. Emily, can you go next?
Yes, first off, thank you to the board members.
Listen, introduce yourself and your address.
Oh, sorry, Emily Tenbough, 15 Albert Court. Thanks to Dr. Nicosia for the detailed presentations, and to the board members for all you do as total volunteers. And I wanted to comment about the before and aftercare. I think it's a good idea to improve the programs, like, and address the structural issues that were mentioned, whether it's in-house or an external company, I see the pros and cons to both. But in any case, I wanted to advocate for some more flexibility being built into the options that are offered to parents and to families. Half-day coverage being offered, like, so parents could just opt-in to half-day coverage would be really helpful, at least for our family, and I think other working families. Non-school day coverage would be a great thing to have, flexibility, so like, some kind of punch card, ten-day or drop-in day use options. And I know it was mentioned that there is a one-hour aftercare option, but I've never seen that. I don't know how to access it, and I've looked through the aftercare material before. And if the start time and end time does shift earlier for Irving and Bardell, and even if it doesn't, I think it would be useful to be able to pay for aftercare like a shorter option, not necessarily all the way to 6:00 PM, perhaps until 3:30 or 4:00 PM. I know there are a lot of parents that just need it until then, and that kind of shorter option at a more affordable rate would be more necessary, especially if the start and end time shift earlier for Irving and Bardell. That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you. Laura, Laura, can I saw your manners.
Hello, oh, sorry. Hi, this is Laura Espinoza Wallach, at 148 Duples Lane, took my son Bernard up here. And I would like to speak about three different issues, all that are affecting the same, the kids, those who are currently students at Irving. I'd like to start first with the proposed start time at Bardell, which obviously, the students currently at Irving will be going to Bardell starting at 7:45. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago at a previous meeting, I'm very concerned about the safety issues. There are not sidewalks, and we live in the triangle section of town, and not every street has sidewalks. We live on Duples Lane, there are no sidewalks on Duples Lane, it's an extremely busy street. Cars frequently go forty or fifty miles per hour in a twenty-five mile-per-hour zone, which is not the board's fault, of course, but is not safe for children to be walking on streets in the Triangle District before the sun rises. We live 1.2 miles away from Bardell School according to Google Maps, yet are not eligible for busing, and we do not own a car. So, I'm just very concerned about safety, our next-door neighbor also, his son will also be is the same age as my son, so they'll both be going to Bardell at the same time. There are many kids who live on our side of town who are going to be walking to Bardell School before the sun rises with no sidewalks. The second issue I would like to talk about is the modular classrooms, which is also affecting the students at Irving. I'm just very concerned that, as has been previously mentioned, spending a hundred thousand dollars to install the modular classrooms does not sound like a very temporary solution to me. I would like to hear what the board proposes for after this, like, temporary two-year plan. And I would also like to ask that all the board members go to Irving's school during the day to see how often the laptop is used. That is the only space at Irving where children can play basketball, soccer, where they have scooter days. So it is a very utilized place at Irving, and we're concerned about the students not having a laptop to use at all in the school. And then, the third comment is about the after-school program changes. My son is also in after-school program at Irving, and Ms. Carla is amazing. I reached out to her several times, with, my son has had trouble adapting to the after-school program. I reached out to her several times, she gets back to me immediately with very warm, caring suggestions. She reaches out directly to his teachers and to the guidance counselor at school to help alleviate any concerns that we have. She is fabulous, and having the same staff, a lot of the same staff at school and after-school program makes a huge difference. And also, we think that raising the price of the after-school program by thirty percent in one year is just impossible. We do not, we cannot afford a car, but we do not qualify for reduced lunch or free lunch, and we would not be able to afford the thirty percent price increase. It's just, in one year, that's just, seems very unfair for a lot of families in this district. And as other people mentioned, that with the Bardell starting time, we moved so much earlier, a lot more families are probably going to be needing after-school care and won't be able to afford it. So we just, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Abby, you're up next.
Hi, I think you called with me, this is Abby, it's Derek Carter Mall, I live on Harper Street. Just a couple of quick comments. One thing I just wanted to mention in terms of a logistical comment, I'm having a lot of trouble hearing and a lot of what's said, and I did check with a couple other people who said they were having the same issue. And I really just want to emphasize how much I appreciate that you guys are offering this hybrid option for people to call in, but I have noticed that when the people who are on mute and maybe using a neighbor's microphone, I'm not sure if that's what's happening, but when we are listening online, like Marilyn, Chris, have been having a lot of trouble. So I just wanted to mention that as a logistical issue, just from the side of things. I'm also just very concerned about hiring a youth safety specialist in general, I don't know the background on that. At all, but specifically, someone who is a correctional officer, perhaps that background is extremely concerning to me, and I appreciate that being noted, and I don't know what the process is for that, if that's already a done deal, but if it's not, maybe that could be looked into further, thank you.
Thank you. Nicole, same here, can I saw you next?
Yes, I can barely hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine, yeah.
I can't hear you. Okay, I actually want to speak on a number of things, actually. First of all, the full start times are still problematic. You're forcing these children to get a lot less sleep, and even have to do aftercare if they can afford it. So, I'm just, that's all I'm getting about the full start times right now, because I'm pretty sure you guys aren't very aware of how I feel about that. But as far as the aftercare, it's highly problematic, people like in my position who don't qualify for reduced lunch, but, you know, people also don't have the budget for aftercare will have to work a lot less, and actually, forced to not work as much as I need to, because I have to, you know, get my kids to pull, and with a shorter, the different start times, that's also going to hurt my money-making abilities. The other problem I have is with these supposedly short-term modular trailers for preschools. I've seen schools before, these have never really acted short-term, they seem like a short-sighted idea for something that's going to have to have a long-term process. And I would like to ask all of you to take the time, to slow it rates down, think a little bit more outside the box here, and think of better ideas of how to put these younger children in these classrooms and make preschools more available. And my last thing, and this is the top one, it's not that you guys recently considered putting a DO in the school where my kids go, being a person of color, a Latina, really, really disgusts me, I do wish we could consider that, knowing that DO police officers are usually the ones who target children of color. And the fact that this is supposed to be a diverse, a progressive town, I'm insulted by the fact that you would even consider doing something like this. I mean, honestly, I'm at a loss of words at this point. I mean, what is going on with this work? Where, no, nobody's listening to any of the parents, it seems. We've been coming from meeting to meeting, nobody seems to be thinking about anything on her. It seems that everything is just rushed through, and regardless of the pushback, you still do it anyway. It seems that everything is just rushed, slow, and regardless of the pushback, you still do it anyway. And it's fury, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Carly, um.
Uh, hi, um, I, I also wanted to thank you for making these meetings, oh, um, Carly Harper, uh, live on Second Avenue, South Second Avenue. Um, I have a daughter at Irving, and I wanted to thank you also for making these meetings hybrid. Um, I appreciate it, it definitely opens up the possibility for me to, uh, be a part, um, an active participant and, and, uh, in what affects my child, um, so much every day. Um, and, uh, and like most of the parents who have commented on here, um, I am also composed about the same, the same issues. So I just want you to know that I'm closed to the earlier start time at Bartle for all the reasons that people have already stated. Um, I'm very concerned about it for safety reasons, for, for health and family reasons. Um, I strongly support the Irving Aftercare Program as it is. Um, Ms. Carla is wonderful, my daughter's in that aftercare program. We can barely afford two days, given our family's budget, and to raise the fees, I know, I think the, the thinking maybe is that if you raise the fees, then the program gets more money. But if you lose people because they can't afford those raised fees, then I don't think you're generating any more money for the program. So I, I think, at least at in, at least in some sort of much, much smaller increment, um, the aftercare program has been a blessing for us. We were not aware of any one-hour option, um, so, uh, we've just had to resort to a part-time option. Um, uh, just to, to use that, but it is a great program. And, uh, I used to work for an aftercare program, uh, as part of a nonprofit, and, uh, that was offered free to the students, um, in the school district where I worked. And, uh, I, I think it, it, it's really important that the program be a, a part of the public school district. Um, what I saw with, uh, trying to work together as two different organizations, supporting one school, there is all sorts of problems that arise. I would much prefer to see this be a single public school entity, uh, and continue to be the way it has been. Um, I'm, I'm disturbed talking about aftercare as a business, I understand that, um, frequently I, I find in politics, uh, when you start hearing something described as a business, um, you start hearing it all, uh, finances, and, uh, and, and quickly you lose the humanity, and it's just about the bottom line. So I, um, I'm, I'm against the aftercare program, and I'm also against the modular trailers at Irving. Uh, that blacktop is essential to the playtime that the kids have, they all use it. Um, and it, and you take away half their place space when you put trailers there. And finally, I'm against the corrections youth officer, that's something I just heard about tonight, and that is very, very disturbing to me, is the mother of a child of color. The idea of a corrections officer at, at the middle school, uh, for safety is disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you. I see they have their hands online, so we're gonna move on with the agenda. Would you board action items? Uh, curriculum instruction, marking, moving?
Yeah, I'd like to move items one through six. Second.
Second, second. Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallon?
Yes.
Mr. Creager?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Woodburn?
Yes.
Uh, five yes and facilities?
Uh, yes, I think the names one through twenty-four, second.
Ms. Coleman?
Sorry, that's your call. Okay, sorry, sorry, that's your call. Take your time. So, it's, it's. Yes, there's so much to go through tonight. Yes.
Ms. Gallon?
Yes.
Mr. Creager?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
I'm skating, I'm twenty-two and twenty-four, and yes, I'm ready to go.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Woodburn?
Yes.
Uh, can, can Ms. Danielle please mute her mic?
Hold on, working on it now, I'm sorry.
So.
Okay, you should be good.
Personnel and communication. Uh, yes, a question first, Dr. Nicosia, if the board were to table number eight, the safety specialist, would that be feasible for the administration? So that we can discuss it in committee, um, even, well, I guess our board meetings are months ago now. Would it be feasible?
I mean, yeah, just, we just would delay starting anybody for the next board meeting. We only have one in April, and it's the very end, so it's your workshop, and you're voting again April.
Okay, so I'd like to move all of the personnel items with an amendment, I live at table number eight. Do we need to vote on the amendment or on the, no? How does this go?
Motion, I'm, I'm syncing the tabling, is that your first?
First motion to table number eight, and then a motion to move the rest. So should we begin the motion to table first? Okay, I move to table number eight. Second. Ms. Coleman?
Uh, yes, although I guess we were tabling this.
Tabling is first.
Tabling is first. The motion to table number eight is, is first. I'll just go ahead and read it. Okay, thank you. Let me see, yes?
Yes. Oh, yes, it's processing, because it's.
There's a lot, there's a lot of time, it's fine. Ms. Gallon?
Yes.
Mr. Creager?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
No.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Woodburn?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I would never, you voted in person, yes.
I was, I was, I took them all seven.
No, I think we went through, say, twenty-seven? One through twenty-seven, except for eight. Second. Yes, Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallon?
Yes.
Mr. Creager?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Woodburn?
Yes.
Okay, and last is policies, so I move, um, the, I move, uh, high school graduation policy five, four, six, oh.
Second.
For training.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallon?
Yes.
Mr. Creager?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Ms. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Woodburn?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna move to board liaison reports. Does anybody have a report from the, uh, groups that they, that they're attending to? Jen?
Uh, I have one thing to share from the Board of Health. I actually was not able to attend this month, but I received an announcement from the Chair.
Okay.
Um, something, something to share. Um, they discussed the teen mental health first aid training program that some districts in New Jersey have implemented. Um, the Chair will be doing some additional research on this, and will share what he finds. The Board of Health members thought that a program like this would be timely and valuable for the students in our high school, and I'll follow up with more information if I'm discreet.
Anybody else have something to add? Uh, no, I don't. Oh, did somebody else already, sorry, I wasn't looking to say. Um, I was not able to attend the Human Relations Commission meeting this month. We do have some questions for the Commission, um, I think I would rather, uh, let me, let me pass those along to the administration separately, and then we can maybe discuss them at the next meeting. Sounds good, that's a good point. Anybody else?
I did want to ask our liaison to the Board of Health if there were any discussion recently about the start times.
Yes, I, I brought that up, I think it was at the last meeting where they showed their full support of the start time changes.
Thank you.
And by one way, the, the, the proposal of, uh, you know, moving the high school and middle school times later and the Bartle Irving times earlier was proposed at the September Board of Health meeting in two thousand twenty-two. We were also supportive of that. And, and, and discussed in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and supported them by the Board of Health.
Their, their earlier start times?
Yeah, we discussed that we had the busing issues.
Oh, oh, I didn't know we.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, cool.
I was correct.
Thank you, thank you, no, appreciate it. Any other current liaison reports? Okay, seeing none, we're moving to, um, president's report. The only thing I, this is really simple, numerical data and stuff, is if you have not done your annual training with School Board Association, we're getting to the end of the year. I'm on Thursday, and I turned it off three times, so you have, you have that, that annual training. May I make a comment?
Yes.
The end of year is December. It's on June.
It's annual year.
Yeah, it's, the board year is the calendar year now, it was changed a few years ago.
Trained.
Not that I want anyone to delay. It's possible. No, but, you know, I believe. I'm, I'm sorry, I know, I know. Just keep that in mind. Yeah, please, please do your training. Uh, old business. Okay, your business? And we're going to back to public comment. Uh, the same drill, have a proper education, welcome to public participation, and deserve this time for your comments. Um, the policy's oh-one-six-four and oh-one-six-seven, establish and regulate the right of public, say, in public meetings. So if you have something you'd like to say, um, please, as before, raise your hand, or just announce yourself. Abby, I see your hand up.
Hi, thank you, um, and I can hear you a little better.
Yeah, okay, I'm talking into the mic, I think that's the issue.
Yeah, no, I, I. Thank you, um, Abby Starencardanow again, I live on Harper Street. Um, I just wanted to clarify, I was on the Board of Education for, or, I'm sorry, not Board of Education, Board of Health for, um, a little while. Granted, not back when they talked about start times, but I did hear a little discussion about it, and I believe the support was for the later middle and high school times. Um, I would ask that you get clarification, um, about the earlier times for Bartle and Irving, if that's what you're saying that they support. I, I hadn't heard that they supported, or that they supported or not supported, but that they gave a specific, um, response to that. So I do know that they supported the middle school and high school later times, um, and they might have known that there would be ripple effects, but I don't believe that they have yet discussed. Uh, and I could be wrong if there were additional conversations, but I had not heard any, uh, further conversations about that. So I just wanted to get some, uh, further clarification if we're, you know, relying on the Board of Health as a source of, um, authority on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm in.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the public statement with us.